It is in fact subject to change in the event that CMS district leaders make any adjustments and/or any federal, state, or local agencies share any updates to our school district or us as schools. Our agenda is listed here and we will very quickly walk through the information for you and then have an opportunity for you to ask us any questions. We want to acknowledge that we are here at school in our TV studio today because we are definitely excited and preparing for those students who will be returning to our school for Plan B plus remote. And so huge shout out to our TV studio team along with our yearbook and journalism instructor who will be providing instruction from one of these two locations, this room along with her classroom. And so first, Plan B plus remote. So we all know, excuse me, first who's who at South MEC. And so we all know that oftentimes we have an opportunity to contact Mr. Starnes whenever we have a question, but the reality is we do want to be sure that all staff members and families and students are aware of those other staff members on our campus who they can contact should they need support. And so we have sent that information out on social media and it is available for you to see. And so as we think about Plan B plus remote, the information that you see here on your screen is the same information that had been shared from the CMS Board of Education. And so the reality is students who are in Plan B plus remote, students will be in school for in-person instruction for a two-week onboarding process in one of three cohorts. Students that are in Cohort A will be on school property from August the 17th through the 19th for three days. Students in Cohort B will be on school property from August the 20th through the 25th. It's important to note that Cohort B is four days, whereas Cohort A is only three days. And then Cohort C is from August the 26th to August the 28th, and that again is for three days. And so it's important to realize and note that students that are in Cohort B are here for four days where students in Cohort A and Cohort C are here for three days. As a reminder, this is applicable to Plan B plus remote. And those students who are in Plan B plus remote are those students that should our school board make a decision to transition from Plan B plus remote to Plan B or Plan A, those are the students that are in Plan B plus remote. The reality is Plan B plus remote also has an orientation. And that orientation is of course across three days or four days depending upon Plan B, excuse me, dependent upon the Cohort A, Cohort B, or Cohort C. Orientation is inclusive of, but not limited to, the areas that you see on your screen. And so we do want to ensure that we have opportunities for a social and emotional learning check-in. We also want to ensure that we have an opportunity to provide our students with the instructional expectations and procedures for the remote phase. And we also want to ensure that students who are underclassmen have an opportunity to take their yearbooks who in fact participate in Plan B plus remote. Then as a different shift, those students who opt in to the full remote academy, it's important to note that the full remote academy is not Plan C. We want to remind all of our families that our school board did in fact approve for us in CMS to operate on a Plan B plus remote, and that is not Plan C. And the full remote academy also is not Plan C. And so the name is not the full remote option, it's not Plan C, it truly is called the full remote academy. This is a opt-in model where students and families can opt in by completing the application which is available on the CMS website. The registration deadline is July the 26th at 11:59 PM. And there is a transition point from the full remote academy should a parent or student be interested at the semester break, which means if a student is enrolled in the full remote academy and our school board makes a decision that Plan B plus remote will shift to Plan B or will shift to Plan A on say October 31st, a student cannot transition from the full remote academy to that now new plan, Plan B or Plan A on October 31st because the only adjustment for transitioning in and out is at the semester break. We know and realize that this year our school calendar is such that the end of the first semester is in December in comparison to previous years where that typically is the third week of January. This diagram here provides you an opportunity to see a visual of the differences between Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. We want to be sure that we provide families and students an opportunity to see this in varied forms. And so the document that's on your screen now simply says, hey, I want my child to attend school in person when that is allowed by the Board of Education. If that is you, then there is no action needed at this time. The reality is students who are in Plan B plus remote, those are all of our students. That is the default for students. And if that in fact is the case, there's nothing you have to do. But remember that your child will be expected to attend the in-person orientation based on the group rotation that they are assigned, Group A, Group B, or Group C. The difference then as you look at number two, which says the full remote academy, that is where you've said as a family, I do want for my child to stay home for full-time to continue remote learning through the first semester because again, the only opportunity to transition in and out is at the semester break. If that in fact is the case, it is important to know and realize that you must register on the CMS website by July the 26th as previously stated. If in fact a decision is made to shift from Plan B plus remote to Plan B or to Plan A, this would not impact or not affect students that are in the full remote academy. And then if you happen to be in the far-right category, which is I'm really not sure what plan is best for my family, I just want to learn more, there are links available on the CMS website which you can learn more, or you can simply contact the CMS call center by dialing 980-343-3001. This visual here simply gives you another opportunity to see the differences in the Plan B plus remote versus the full remote academy. Again, we want to be sure that we provide our families with multiple visuals. So as we then go into what are our instructional expectations? It is critical that as a family you know and understand that life will look extremely different than it did during the fourth quarter of the year. I'm going to repeat, our expectations are very different and they will look, sound, and feel very different than it did from the fourth quarter of the year. We heard, we received a number, not just here at South MEC, but across CMS, a number of emails from families with their concerns as relates to the level of instruction that our students receive. And so in the next few slides, I really want for you to bear with me so that you really understand what that expectation is and how it may look different. And so the reality is on this chart, you will see and notice a couple things that are different. And there also are a couple things that may be different if you in fact participated in this presentation yesterday that are on this slide. And so first, 6:30 to 7:15 is the new arrival time for students. Whereas in the past, students were not permitted to arrive on our campus and go into our buildings until 6:40 because breakfast did begin at 6:40 where students could get off the bus or if they were car riders or they drove to school or they walked, they could go onto campus and go into the mall and wait for first block to start. The difference between last year and this year is such that our arrival time has been moved up to 6:30 AM and that arrival time does continue to 7:15 AM. It is also critical to note that when students arrive on campus, they are expected to report directly to their first block class after completing the wellness screening that we'll talk about in just a few. For those who are participating in the Plan B plus remote, that is an expectation per the Lighting Our Way Forward document that we will share with you in just a few. Regardless of the plan, Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy, first block is expected to begin at 7:15 AM. Again, regardless of the plan at this time, first block is expected to begin at 7:15 AM. We do have increased time for transitions, whereas last school year, we obviously had a six-minute transition between each class. Now, understanding that we are in a different model, we will have a 10-minute transition between each class, even though we will only have one-third of our students on campus, one-third of the students in Group A, one-third in Group B, and one-third in Group C. It's also important to note, you notice an SCL or advisory block after first block that is a new block that is expected for all students to participate in. That is not a homeroom, that is not enrichment reinvented, that is not a flex period, that is an advisory and a social and emotional learning block that is an expectation for all students at South MEC and all students in all schools in CMS kindergarten through 12th grade. All high schools across our district will follow this exact same bell schedule because this bell schedule was not created by us itself. It was created by all high school principals for all schools to follow. It's also important to note that third block, we will in fact have lunch during third block, breakfast and lunch will be a grab and go model. And so for as much as you have third block listed, you do not on today's presentation see a time for SCL block, second block, third block, or fourth block because we do want to have an opportunity to reevaluate the number of minutes in each block to ensure that our students receive the highest level of instruction as possible from an equity lens. But what you also will notice as a shift is that the dismissal time is now 1:45 PM in comparison to last year when it was 2:15 PM. That dismissal will be a staggered dismissal where we will be releasing students by building to dismiss for that respective day. Again, this model, this plan, this bell schedule that you see is applicable to both Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. So yes, students that are in the full remote academy will be expected to start school each day from their respective location at home or wherever at 7:15 AM. It is important to note that that time is a strict time. As we think about attendance, and so again, I'm repeating myself on purpose, it's important to know that expectations are very different from last semester and then the fourth quarter of last year. And so on the remote instruction days, regardless if you are in Plan B plus remote or if you are in the full remote academy, attendance is determined by daily evidence of engagement within the instructional content. So this attendance expectation is inclusive of synchronous instruction, it's inclusive of evidence of engagement in the class material, what's based on information in Canvas, and it does mean you have to complete assignments and submit those assignments and complete assessments. And so yes, attendance does matter. And here at the high school level, attendance is monitored daily for each class. So that means first block, SCL block, second block, third block, and fourth block, attendance will be taken in power school on a daily basis for each class. It's also important to note that should in fact a student be absent, just as if we were doing the regular school year, they are considered absent with an unexcused absence. And our attendance policies will in fact require documentation to shift that unexcused absence to an excused absence. Our team here, our Sabre Administrative Leadership Team will work very closely in running reports to see which students are not engaged in the Canvas learning activities and then pulling in our deans, our assistant principals, our counselors, our social workers, and others alike to provide the necessary supports, supplemental or intensive to our students as needed and even identifying those wraparound services that can be provided. As we think about instruction, it's also important to know these two terms. We've seen them on various documents. We have the synchronous learning and the asynchronous learning. Last semester during the fourth quarter, we spent a lot of time in an asynchronous learning model, but the reality is we now will have a blend between a synchronous learning model and an asynchronous learning model. And so as you think about synchronous, it's important to just know that is real time, that's virtual, that's live. All of our students will be expected every single ten, every single day to have at least 40 minutes in each of their classes in a synchronous learning model. There will be a blend of synchronous and asynchronous, but yes, every single day students are expected to log in and receive instruction live from their South MEC teacher in a synchronous model and the remaining of that time will be from an asynchronous model perspective. You see on your screen the advantages and limitations to each of these models, but again, last semester in the fourth quarter, we spent probably 99.8% of our time in an asynchronous model and we hear lots of feedback from students and parents that that just did not work. We are shifting as a district to a synchronous model and an asynchronous model and the expectation is that our students engage in that rigid schedule and they are expected to participate on a daily basis. So this is another diagram or another chart which allows for you to simply see the differences between the Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. So one thing that I really want to be sure to identify is that regardless of the Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy, your student as a parent or as a family will still have their same student schedule, their same assigned South MEC teacher, and they will continue to meet the graduation requirements as set by the state and by the school district. So what does that mean? That means if your student has first block AP physics, that first block AP physics will continue to be that class first block regardless if they are in Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy. If they have second block art, they will still have art second block regardless if it is Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy. What that does mean is that all of our students will still engage with each other in a very collaborative fashion and should a decision be made where our students who are in the Plan B plus remote then return to school for Plan B or for Plan A, then at that time, the students in the full remote academy will have virtual opportunities where they are engaging in learning with their teacher, with their teacher and their classmates who are onsite in school. Then the students in the full remote academy will simply be zoomed in or Canvas logged in or Google Met in whatever platform we as a district choose to use. And so at South MEC, we will not be assigning students on NCVPS or assigning students to teachers that are not assigned as South MEC teachers. We have been very committed to ensuring that our students keep the schedule that they had planned on and that we teach the classes that we had planned to teach all along and that we provide the necessary supports to our teachers by way of district Canvas documents and Canvas shells that have already been created. You'll also see the daily expectations for attendance remain, the SCL block remains, the Canvas learning platform remains. Students who are interested in extracurricular activities, clubs, organizations, athletics, regardless of Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy, do in fact qualify for those. Grading assessments are in both plans. The only differences are, A, as I mentioned, students who are in Plan B plus remote, should the school board make a decision to shift, then yes, those students will in fact shift from a remote model to an in-person model based on that school board decision if that in fact changes. And again, students in the full remote academy do not have that social interaction with their classmates and their teachers during their orientation during the first two weeks of school. And again, here at South MEC, we will not be utilizing any NCVPS classes except for those students who are on an OCS diploma. Again, all students will have their exact same schedule regardless of the course. Again, that includes all of our courses, our World Language Magnet courses, our Health and PE courses, our art courses, our ROTC courses. All courses will be taught in a remote fashion regardless of the course and our school district, our district leaders, our master teachers have already created those courses in a remote fashion by using Canvas as the platform. What is Canvas? Canvas is obviously an opportunity where you as a parent can engage in learning with your student and you can have real-time updates with, from that teacher. But it is in fact the platform where students will engage in learning from their teacher. You can look on this link here where you can actually download that Canvas parent app. It is available in multiple languages. And again, you can engage in dialogue with your child's teacher and have an opportunity to know what assignments are expected, when they're due, and see those grades for that respective course. We will not have an opportunity to use Google Classroom or Schoology or any of the other platforms that some of our teachers may have used in the past, even if it is the preferred method. Canvas is the only learning management platform that we will be using and moving forward. As we think about the health and safety of our students and our staff, it is important to note that the state created a document entitled Lighting Our Way Forward. That document is linked here, but it is also available on this NCDPI website and it simply provides all of the reopening guidelines for schools and school leaders to use across the state of North Carolina. And so based on the information shared in this document, we have highlighted a number of areas that have been lifted from your questions prior to today that we want to be sure that all of our families are aware of. So first, all of our hallways and buildings will be one-way. So that means every single building on our campus for our students and staff will have one-way directionals for entrances and exits and transition throughout the day in those buildings. We also will not be able to utilize our cafeteria to eat breakfast or lunch. Breakfast and lunch will be grab and go only in the F cafeteria, but no students at this time will be eating lunch in the cafeteria, either the F cafeteria or the E cafeteria. We will only use the F cafeteria for grab and go breakfast and lunch based on guidance that is provided in the Lighting Our Way Forward document. You also will notice that we will have a max of 16 students per class. Again, we will have students in Group A, Group B, and Group C, which means that of our 3,400 students, we will have on average between 1,100 and 1,150 students on campus. That does not include the number of students that obviously have opted into the full remote academy and such that that will in fact allow for us to ensure that all of our classes have 16 or less in each class and that no more than 24 students are on a school bus at a given time. We as a team have worked extremely hard of monitoring all of the spaces on our campus, inclusive of our mobiles, and yes, we are able to accommodate furniture and students of 16 or less in all spaces on our campus while ensuring that we maintain that six-foot social distancing at all times. Restroom breaks will not be able to take place during that 10-minute transition. Students are only permitted to use the restroom during class time and they obviously will have that permission from their teacher to do so. And when they do that, they will be expected to use those one-way directionals in our hallways. At the same time, we will have staff members that are on duty to ensure that our students are in compliance with those expectations of only using the restroom during the given times while at the same time ensuring that our restrooms and facilities are cleaned and monitored and stocked, and we'll talk about that in just a few as well. All staff members and students will be required to use and wear a cloth face covering at all times on campus. That is an expectation and we all are expected to adhere to that expectation regardless based on the information that has been provided in our Lighting Our Way Forward document and our reentry plan that staff received yesterday from our school district. As we talk about cleaning, we know, we heard loud and clear from our students last year ones prior to us leaving on March 13th, that we had some challenges here at South MEC. And we want to just be honest and say, yes, we had some challenges last year from a cleaning supply perspective. And we have worked very hard based on the feedback from our student council who did an exceptional job of sharing and advocating for our students. Yes, we know that we had those challenges. Leaving that in the past, we have in fact moved forward with a new daily schedule for our cleaning and for our restocking of restrooms in all of our campus buildings. We have a very intentional method of which all of our restrooms will be inspected at the, at the end of each block to ensure that all of their restrooms have the necessary supplies in them for whoever is using that restroom, students or staff, to be sure that they are in fact equipped with the necessary materials so that that person can be effective when they go in the restroom while at the same time ensuring that our classrooms are cleaned and disinfected at the end of each block in preparation for students to come in to receive instruction that next block. Let's keep in mind, this currently is only for the first two weeks when students will be on school for Group A, Group B, or Group C. Again, this is only at this time based on that two-week model. It's also important to note that hand sanitizer stations will be available in each building and each classroom. In each classroom, it will be available for all teachers and in each building, it will be available at those one-way entrances. So now this is going to shift us to our question-answer period. So in your chat feature, we have just added for you the link where you can list your questions that you may have. As you list those questions, we then will have an opportunity to call off those questions and ensure that you have an answer to those questions here in real time. While we do that, we want to remind all that the chat feature in Zoom is not the place to list your questions. Again, we want to ensure that we have a frequently asked question document that is created. So we are receiving those questions in written form and we will not have an opportunity for you to ask those questions live. You will type them, we will read them all for you, at which point we will then answer them. Couple things that I want to note because it's been a normal question that has come up for us is A, how will that virtual model work, Mr. Starnes, for classes like PE or ROTC or World Languages? So for example, if in fact I have first block German for honors, which is one of our World Language Magnet classes, then yes, students who are enrolled in that class will continue to be enrolled in that class if they are in Plan B plus remote or if they are in the full remote academy. If that class is offered at first block, students will engage in learning at 7:15 by the instructor here at South MEC and the students will not see or feel anything different regardless of their model. On the teacher's side, they will see students in both of those models, in the full remote academy and Plan B plus. The only difference is if Plan B plus remote then shifts to Plan B or shifts to Plan A, then those students will then be, as I mentioned, zoomed in or Google Met in or Canvas logged in if in fact we return to school for the remainder of the time that we are in that respective model. So I hope that answers that question we have received just a couple times. In addition to Health and PE, Mr. Starnes, how in the world will we learn PE remote? Well, the reality is the course is called Health and Physical Education and so we will have an opportunity for students to receive instruction such that you will have instruction taken place remotely for our students We see some notes here in regards to the Google form that it's saying you can't access it. So we will go in and make those adjustments now. We apologize for that. You now should have access to the form to be able to type in your questions. You now should have access to the form. So again, each of these sessions are recorded. Each of these sessions are recorded and the sessions, yesterday, we had one session with students at twelve noon. We had a session with staff at four P M. And we have three sessions today in English for families and one session this afternoon for families in Spanish. All of those sessions along with the frequently asked question document will be shared in our Friday updates with families tomorrow in addition to be made available on our school website. So as we are waiting on some questions to come in, we're going to call, we're going to show on your screen some additional questions that have already been frequently asked so far. And then we will be calling those questions out that you have lifted. So first, how will athletics work, Mr. Starnes? At this time, we know and realize that the North Carolina High School Student Association has still identified that we will not be exhibiting or not be in fall sports until at least September the first. And therefore, once we have an update from the North Carolina High School Student Association, we will provide more guidance as to what fall sports look like. But at this time, they have said that it has been pushed back to at least September the first. We know and realize that the cafeteria is a great place for students to have social interactions. But a question has been, are we able to use the cafeteria even if we can social distance? And at this time, that answer is no. However, we are working to ensure that we review the Lighting Our Way Forward document as a district such that any flexibilities that can be provided, we will ask and see if that is a possibility. But per the information from the state, at this time, students are not expected or not allowed to eat lunch in the cafeteria.
Okay. Okay. To clarify, the schedule you showed earlier applies to both in-person orientation and the remote day.
That is correct. The schedule that is now on your screen, we're going to go back to the schedule that does apply to students that are in a remote model and the Plan B plus remote. So the schedule that applies, that should be on your screen, is applicable to students that are in the Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. That is a absolute correct answer.
How will clubs and sports be handled? I heard that some clubs might be able to meet in person.
So no clubs will be able to meet in person. All clubs and organizations will follow the same model and expectation. We will in fact have clubs and organizations that meet. Those meetings will take place virtually, but there are no clubs and organizations that will be permitted to meet in person that does include marching band. Marching band will not be meeting in person.
Will South MEK teachers still offer tutoring like they have in the past before or after school? I worry that this will be needed more than ever this year.
So based on our model of our asynchronous and synchronous models, we do know that currently our blocks will have between seventy to seventy-five minutes in them. And of those seventy to seventy-five minutes, we learned that at least forty of those minutes must be the live instruction, which provides opportunities for immediate feedback such that that does then allow for additional opportunities for tutoring, remediation, and/or enrichment throughout that time block. Currently, there are no opportunities for before or after-school tutoring based on the model that has been shared by the Board of Education. And so for the first two weeks at this time, there are no before and after-school activities, which does include tutoring. However, we know and realize that our students may need some additional support regardless of the course that they are in. So we are working to ensure that we embed those remediation, enrichment, and intervention opportunities in the number of minutes that a student is expected to engage. So again, if first block is expected to be seventy to seventy-five minutes, of that seventy to seventy-five, if forty of them are live, then that then remains about thirty-five minutes, which does allow for tutoring or remediation or enrichment.
How will you conduct science lab classes such as biology?
So science classes such as biology, chemistry, physics, forensic science, all of those opportunities, there are virtual labs which are able to be conducted. Our district and our master teachers have worked very hard to ensure that that is possible. And that does also include our advanced placement classes, so A P Biology and A P Chemistry. There are Canvas shells that have been created by our master teachers and our teachers here at South MEK have had opportunities to engage in that creation with our district and district teachers across all high schools. And yes, all of our classes will be able to be taught from a remote fashion and our teachers have been engaged in that process the entire summer, should they be interested in doing so.
If my student is in the full remote academy and it's taught by South MEK teachers, when does school begin for them?
So school for all students begins on August the seventeenth. When you receive your back-to-school mailer, we will have information on what will take place, on what days, for what group of students. But again, school is expected to begin for all students on August the seventeenth. And we will have a very scripted model as to what full remote academy students should be doing from August seventeenth to August the twenty-eighth, along with what will students do who are in Plan B plus remote, who are not on campus while they are at home for those six or seven days depending upon their group? What will they do during that time as well? So we will be very scripted and share that information. That takes us back to that that first visual that we saw of, that's one of those details with the fly on the eye and we are not quite there yet. We're working very hard to provide those details in the near future.
What about areas like drama, theater, band, and chorus?
So areas like drama, band, orchestra, theater, they apply very similar to R O T C, P E, health. All of those courses are in fact able to be taught remotely.
How are you handling students who may have to be self-isolated during the onboarding weeks? Or how would it be handled once we switch to Plan B?
So based on the information provided in the Lighting Our Way Forward document, there is an opportunity that is expected by all schools in the state of North Carolina to have wellness checks each day as students and staff arrive on campus. Those wellness checks here at South MEK will be an expectation for students who are in the Plan B plus remote and in the event that our Board of Education moves from Plan B plus remote to Plan B or Plan A, those wellness checks will still be expected as long as it is a state expectation. If in fact there's a student who, based on the information in the Lighting Our Way Forward document or a staff person, has a need to then be relocated to another location on our campus, the expectation will be that that is done and that we have the necessary supervision in that respective location based on guidance that has been provided through the Lighting Our Way Forward document and our re-entry plans from our school district.
Where will students eat lunch if the cafeteria is closed?
So based on the information in the Lighting Our Way Forward document, it explicitly indicates that students are expected to eat breakfast and lunch in their classrooms. However, here at South MEK, there is a request that has been lifted along with other high schools to ask if students can eat lunch in outside courtyard areas. Here at South, we know we have two large outside courtyard areas in addition to if students can eat lunch in the mall or in other areas with supervision as long as they maintain six-foot social distancing.
Are students allowed to bring their own lunch?
Absolutely. Students are allowed to bring their own lunch as they always have been in a typical school year. The only difference is students who do not bring their own lunch and are interested in any lunch provided by CMS will have one of two options, a hot choice and a cold choice.
Is a later start time under consideration?
So at this time, the district is working extremely hard to ensure that we have one schedule for all high schools across all of CMS. In the event that the district makes a shift to a later start time for a once we go into a remote fashion, we will be sure to share that information. However, at this time, seven fifteen is the start time for all students in the full remote academy and all students in Plan B plus remote.
Will A P Chinese students be offered the same format time as Plan B plus remote students?
So all courses at South MEK, all courses inclusive of world language courses, our health and P E courses, R O T C courses, arts, theaters, all courses will be offered at South MEK in the model that we shared. If the student has A P Chinese, which is offered at second block with our Chinese teacher, then he or she, that student, will continue to have that class on their schedule at that given time regardless of their model, Plan B plus remote or the full remote academy.
Is the forty minutes per class all instruction or interaction time and all self-directed done during non-synchronous time?
So our class periods that are between seventy to seventy-five minutes have a blend of asynchronous and synchronous. The live instruction expectation of at least forty minutes will take place in all classes regardless of if a student is in Plan B plus remote or if they are in the full remote academy.
Where do we get the pairing code for Canvas parent login?
So if we can go back to the slide on Canvas, when you receive your back-to-school mailer, that will, there will be information in the back-to-school mailer in which you will have an opportunity to dive into Canvas more. At this time, you can simply download, but you won't be able to see any courses for students because we have not loaded students into Canvas. But in fact, these are the instructions on how to download the app and step-by-step what to do. And when you receive your back-to-school mailer, we will ensure that it does have the pairing code for you included in those instructions.
Are we still required to purchase P E uniform?
So understanding that we are not in school, we are in a remote fashion, Plan B plus remote along with full remote academy, the purchase of P E uniforms is not an expectation at this time. If in fact our Board of Education makes a decision to move from Plan B plus remote to a Plan B or to a Plan A, P E uniforms will then be required if in fact that decision is made for us to shift from Plan B plus remote to Plan B or Plan A.
In a full remote option, how are audition courses handled? I haven't heard any mention of jazz band, chorus, or symphonic band, for example.
So all courses will follow the same model for the full remote academy and Plan B plus remote. This includes every single course that is offered at South MEK. Again, our district, our teachers, our master teachers have worked extremely hard to ensure that regardless of the course, yearbook, jazz band, or biology, that they have an opportunity to be taught in a remote fashion.
Is it possible that South MEK teachers teaching the full remote academy will be changed by the district after families choose between B plus remote and full virtual academy?
So no, teachers at South MEK, there is no such thing as teachers assigned to the full remote academy. Again, at South MEK, we have been very intentional in ensuring that our students have the same schedule. So there is no teacher that's assigned just to teach in the full remote academy. Teachers are expected to provide instruction to our students regardless of the model that the student is in. If they are in a Plan B plus remote, that teacher will still have that same schedule and teach those students and regardless if the student is in the full remote academy. It's important to know that that may not be the same process at other schools. But here at South MEK, we are not adjusting our class schedules and we do not have teachers assigned to certain models. Our teachers will teach students that are assigned on their class schedules and on their caseloads.
I know some teachers really struggled with the technology last spring. What has been done to make sure teachers are using Canvas as robustly as possible this semester?
So from June, as a part of our checkout process, when teachers left in June, they were provided information and expected professional development over the summer as to what they should be doing from a Canvas perspective. There are multiple Canvas training, P D, and professional learning opportunities that our teachers have had an opportunity to engage in over the summer. And for those teachers who are new to CMS or new to South MEK, they in fact will also have those opportunities once we begin school on August the sixth for them because teachers do return to work on August the sixth. And we again will have opportunities to engage in those technology platforms. It is important for us to note this, that all of us, when Mr. Starnes accepted the position as principal of South MEK, I did not accept a position as principal of virtual South MEK and our teachers did not accept the position as virtual teacher. And so we truly are building this plane as we go. And we do have some teachers that may have some support needs and we will be sure that we provide them with that support as needed.
What is the efficacy of changing school counselors during this time? How will affected students meet their new counselors?
So every year, we have staff who transition. And that is a normal process that exists in corporate America when people get new jobs. That's a normal process when teachers choose to move or relocate or counselors choose to move or retire. We do know here at South MEK that we had two counselors to retire from South MEK and we had one counselor who transitioned to a brand-new school district. And so as a result, we did in fact gain three new counselors this new, this school year in addition to a brand-new school counselor position. Because prior to this year, our school counselors had a caseload upwards of four hundred and fifty, five hundred students per counselor. And honestly, that's just ridiculous. And so in an effort to ensure that our counselors had smaller caseloads of three hundred fifty to four hundred students max, then we had to make a very tough decision to ensure that we were providing the necessary social and emotional supports, college and career counseling supports, advising supports to students in the most effective and efficient model. Because of that, we then reshuffled our counselors, who are, some are new and some are not, to the model that we have based on student last name. Whereas in the past, we had students who were freshman academy counselors and students who were tenth through twelfth grade counselors. Opportunities to meet those counselors along with other members of our student services team will obviously take place virtually for those students who are in the full remote academy. But those students who are in Plan B plus remote will have an opportunity to meet counselors along with other staff members when they attend the orientation because the purpose of the in-person orientation is to ensure those social interactions are present and are very visible for our students and for our staff. We have in fact shared the names, the email addresses of all of our counselors. Just like our teachers, our counselors are off for the summer and they do not officially return back to work until August the sixth. Therefore, you can email your counselor, they can easily set up a Zoom call or Zoom conference or Google Meet, at which point you can meet him or her if in fact you have a new counselor. But again, in an effort to ensure that we move from a five hundred caseload to about a three hundred fifty caseload, we had to make a tough decision and unfortunately, that decision could not be punted off to a later time or later date as a result of COVID nineteen.
How will A-day, B-day classes be handled during orientation? Cohort A C only gets three days total, so only one day with A or B-day teachers.
So that is correct because we are a high school and we have a number of high schools in our district along with some middle schools who operate some classes on an eight-day, B-day model along with some classes as a four-by-four semester model. The eight-day, B-day schedule will start on August the seventeenth at this time. And that does in fact mean that when we have orientation for those students who are in Plan B plus remote, those students who are in Plan A, who may have, a eight-day, B-day, may only go to that class one day for orientation, very similar to Plan C.
Can you offer the link to the Lighting Our Way Forward document?
Yes, we will put the link to the Lighting Our Way Forward document in the chat feature for you now. Yes, we will put the link to the lighting our way forward document in the chat feature for you now. If you can just Google lighting our way forward NCBPI, we will put it in the chat feature for you now, absolutely.
When will we receive back-to-school, back-to-school mail?
So, if we'll go to the next slide, it does provide you with additional information on how, what are some next steps and how you can stay in the know. And so, at the very bottom of this slide, you will notice that students and families will have access to your student's schedule and your student rotations if you are in Plan B plus remote on August the 8th. In addition to logging into Power School, when you will have a chance to see your schedule for yourself real-time on August the 8th, that is a Saturday, we do know and realize that. But you also will receive a back-to-school mailer at the address that we have on file. In that back-to-school mailer, it will also include your student's schedule, your assigned student rotation, transportation information, if your student is in fact riding a school bus to school. It will also at this time include your student identification card because all students will in fact be expected to bring their ID and have their ID with them each day while they are on campus and to use that ID should they be having meals on the grab-and-go from the cafeteria. But again, we will be mailing all that information from our school on August the 7th, at which point you will then receive it hopefully by August the 8th or shortly thereafter. But August the 8th, you can log straight into Power School and see all that information. But it is going to be critical, per the update that's on the top of this screen, that you ensure that you contact our school registrar to be sure that your phone number, your email address and your home address is in fact correct because we only will be utilizing information in Power School and we want to be sure that you have all the necessary information. The next slide shows us what our next steps are. We have about four minutes left in this particular session, so we're going to ask the next few questions. But the next slide shows us what your next steps are as a family. Your next steps are first, if you want to learn more, you can obviously go online to our CMS website or the South MEK website, which will redirect you to the CMS website just to learn more about the Plan B plus remote and the full remote academy. If you have questions, please do not hesitate to contact us here at the school. You can email any member of our administrative leadership team. If you have questions directly regarding scheduling, please don't hesitate to contact any member of our student services team. But please do not forget that August, excuse me, I wish August, July the 26th is the date that you must choose if you intend to be in the full remote academy. That decision must be made by July the 26th because that does allow for our district to then share that information with schools so that then we'll have an opportunity to properly plan for the upcoming year. And please don't forget to join our South MEK PTSA along with the South MEK Foundation. Additional questions for the last few minutes?
How are cohort groups separated?
Very good question and we failed to mention this earlier, I apologize. Cohort groups were separated by the district and so, students will be assigned to a cohort, cohort A, cohort B, cohort C, based on their household, not based on their last name, not based on their zip code. So, what that means is a student who has a third grader at Smithfield Elementary School who is assigned to Group A, that sibling who may have a ninth grader here at South MEK would also be assigned to cohort Group A. That also means that we have students from all over our county who attend South MEK and all students who are in our residential zone who were randomly assigned based on their household. And so, again, it is not based on last name, it's not based on grade and it is not based on zip code.
Is there an expectation that we stay online from 7:15 to 1:45?
There is an expectation that students are engaged in learning all day from 7:15 until 1:45 PM with the necessary breaks for the 10-minute transition and with the necessary breaks for lunch while we are in the remote phase. It is also important that we know and realize that we are still in school and school is still in session and during those live periods, based on the schedule that will be provided to you and the schedule that was shared, of those 70 to 75 minutes, the remaining, of the 70 to 75 minutes, those 40 minutes that you're expected to be engaged in live instruction, the expectation is truly there that you do because it does have an attendance requirement along with each of our courses.
Will you need any in-person parent support during the orientation days?
So, that's a very good question. Per our document provided from CMS, unfortunately, we are not permitted to have volunteers on campus at this time. And so, as we think about what support we will need from our parents or from our community, we are working very hard with our South MEK PTSA and the South MEK Foundation to ensure that as we identify what our needs are from the community, that we articulate that to the South MEK PTSA and the South MEK Foundation, at which point that will then be communicated out to all of our stakeholders, our families and our community members and our community partners. So, that's all the questions that we have received and that's perfect because we have hit the 10 AM point. We will go back to the slide which takes you to our, the one before. Yep, that one there. So, as a reminder, this is how you stay in the know. If you want to be sure that you have updated contact information, please don't hesitate to contact our school registrar. Each Friday, we will have weekly announcements which go out to you via call and email, so please ensure that you stay in the know. If in fact this information was helpful, please let us know that as well because we want to be sure that we are providing you with information in a very transparent fashion. And so, if in fact you found any of this helpful or if there are additional questions that you have, please don't hesitate to contact us. We do have two additional sessions today for families in English and one session this afternoon at 4:00 PM for families in Spanish. Thank you so much. We have one other question.
Will teachers be working from campus at South MEK or from home?
So, per information that was provided in the re-entry plan from our superintendent, teachers are encouraged to work from site, which means teachers are encouraged to work from here at South MEK as we go into the remote phase starting on August 31st. I will note that we have worked extremely hard as a team and as a staff to ensure that our campus is prepared for our students and our staff persons. Since March, myself, the assistant principals, our deans, our athletic director, a number of our secretaries have been here every single day along with our custodians who by far have worked extremely hard to ensure that our campus is ready and prepared. And so, we are ready, providing the necessary precautions and ensuring that we are safe for ourselves and healthy for ourselves as well. Thank you so much for the questions. We look forward to seeing you and hearing more information from you in the near future. Have a great day. Go Sabres.